Good evening. This is the May 15th ZBA meeting, and this meeting is being recorded, so at this time I'm just gonna ask if there's anyone else in the audience recording. I'm seeing done. So we have a 7 o'clock applicant, Edward Owaswanzien, requesting a special permit on the section 3.2.2.1. I'm not gonna forget this time. I'll take a motion open.
Motion open, meeting?
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is Mr.?
Owen Nessie.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yes, I'm here.
Could you come up to the microphone? And so you're here.
Right there.
Oh, actually, the podium there.
The podium.
So then you can be on TV, too. So you're here before us for a special permit to clarify 82 Oxford Street North as a two-family. We received a document from the building inspector that, I guess we have a letter now, that the building was declared by former building inspector Don Miller as a legal, legal conforming two-family property back on May 6, 2004.
Yes. My neighbor, Bill Cusson, is present, and he gave me that letter.
So I guess we determine that.
Yeah, at this point, the hearing is unnecessary because it's already been previously determined.
Okay.
And the determination provides that it's a legal two-family, so.
Okay.
So I guess you're all set.
Is there anyone here?
Is there anyone here in the audience on 82 Oxford Street North that wants to talk about it, other than Mr. Cusson, since we know?
I agree with you.
Yes, could you come up and give us your name, address, and whatever your comments are?
My name is Ann French. I'm a real estate agent with Tina Bilisarian, Realtors in Boylston, and I'm the reason this whole thing got started, because I worked with the Owen Nessiens back in 2011 when they purchased the home.
Okay.
And I'm now the listing agent as they're selling the home, and it was brought to my attention that this was not a legal two-family because it lacked a special permit. So I've handed over to the town of Auburn $240 something dollars.
Yeah.
Which to me seems unnecessary, and I'd like to ask if it's at all possible to be refunded by money, because apparently this was already seen as a two-family. I knew it was assessed as a two-family, and in speaking with Sheila Conroy and later Nick, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce his name. He's the building inspector?
Yes.
Are you Nick?
Yes.
Okay, I spoke with you on the phone, but we never met in person.
Yep.
That everybody agreed that this was a two-family, but it lacked a special permit as a two-family in this zone. But apparently, it had been granted, so it seems to me this was kind of an unnecessary exercise.
Let me correct that. The special permit had never been granted. That's why I didn't have any documentation on it. For whatever reason, we did not have a copy of this letter in the address file, so I was unaware that, until I received a copy of this letter, I was unaware that there had been anything written or clarification done. So when we did give you the direction, that was the appropriate course of action, because we were unaware that this letter existed. Again, I apologize that there wasn't a copy in the town files for that. It could have alleviated a lot of items.
Right. Well, so you're saying I'm out of luck, I think. Is that possible?
That's not my decision.
Okay.
That's up to the board.
I'll make a motion to, first of all, I think you should probably withdraw without prejudice the application, and this way we can refund.
Okay.
I don't think we can refund the mailing part of it.
Okay.
But we can refund the application if the board sees fit.
Right.
And just to come to the defense of our building inspector here, by the bylaw, it doesn't meet the criteria, and he went without this letter, and, you know, he was perfectly right by telling you that you needed a special permit at that point.
And everyone I've dealt with in the town hall, particularly Sheila Conroy, has been so helpful and so professional and so wonderful, but this made it a little bit awkward in marketing the property, because I had to disclose that this was potentially an issue, and it was something we had to get resolved, and it had to be written into the agreement between the person of the family, rather, now buying the property. So, you know, it's caused a little bit of stress and so forth, and I was very confident it would be resolved successfully. But if I can get even some portion of what I spent back, that would be terrific, so.
I didn't hear.
The motion is to refund the application money part. We won't be able to do the mailing because the mailing's already been done.
Right.
But at least the application part, we can refund for them.
So let's put a figure on it, and the figure here is the $100?
It's, yeah, the application is $100.
$100, so let's include that in the motion, and then I'll second it.
Okay, $100 for the application.
Application.
Right.
So we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much.
You need to ask to withdraw without prejudice.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I need to write a letter?
No, no, you can just ask the board to withdraw without, you like to withdraw without prejudice.
I would like to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay.
Please.
Motion to have, motion to?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your cooperation. Good night.
Yeah, we have to wait, unfortunately. We have to wait to the exact time, unfortunately. Would you like to do the minutes while we're here?
Oh, sure. Does everyone have a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting of April 17?
Yes.
Anyone okay with it? Motion to accept them?
Motion to accept the minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Sure, okay.
Motion, motion to go into recess till 8:00, until 7:15?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to reopen the hearing?
Is there a second?
I'll second, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So we have a 7:15 applicant, John and Kimberly Staley. I'm always bad with the names, but requesting a special permit on the section 3.2.2.10, accessories apartment for accessory apartment at 16 Garden Street, Auburn, Mass. Good evening. If you could maybe just come up to the podium, maybe give us a little, we got your packet, maybe a little description of what your plans are for.
Sure. Thank you for having us tonight. We are looking to take some of our existing space in our house, our garage space and an adjacent den, and renovating those to create an in-law suite for my wife's parents. The plans have been, we are working with a design firm from Westboro, Westboro Design Center.
Okay.
Who is handling the designs and the specifications and all that stuff. The plans that we're currently designing would not add to the square footage of the house, so it would merely repurpose existing space. And this is being done for health reasons of my wife's parents.
And I know we received two blueprints, and I'm getting old, so it's a little bit hard for me to see. So one of them, the two, the one with less detail, is that the second floor, or is that?
I guess I can't see that far.
Okay.
We're not doing any renovations to the second floor space, so I guess I'm not quite sure what you're looking at, but the first floor space would have, what would be, there would be two kitchens, basically, in it.
Okay.
Two bathrooms. The upstairs floor, if that is in the designs, would just have a single bathroom and then three bedroom areas.
Do you know roughly the total square footage of the refurbished area between the garage and the den?
When we asked, when we did the measurements, granted, it was my own and was fairly crude, it came out to be about 450, so I don't know with the, but in the space that's there now, the walls, we're under, we're alleged to believe that the walls would have to be expanded a little bit for new codes, so my guess would be we'd fall under the 440, 440 square feet.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Oh, great.
The design that's currently there with less writing on it.
Okay.
Is the existing layout.
Okay.
Of the first floor space.
Twelve.
And the one that, the one that doesn't have the street names on it is the proposal.
Okay, that's the first one.
Oh, garage, yeah. Right now, we're just looking at the tax code.
Perfect, maybe I can go off of here.
Okay.
12 by 19, so.
That would be from here to here.
Okay. Bob added up the square footage for the last.
Without the garage, it's more like their number, but.
It's 228.
They've figured out, it comes close, we're darned close with it.
Excuse me, can I ask the board what we're, what you're calculating?
Oh, the refurbished area between the garage and then the den, in terms of how much space they were refurbishing. And I guess that sounds pretty.
Just, you know, you're going to perform to.
Yes.
No, G.
Yeah, G. Of the, of 9.3.12.
Oh, the 700 square feet?
Yep.
Yes. I did a.
They're within it, but.
Yeah, I did a calculation on it, and I get a rough square footage of roughly 454.
With the garage, counting the garage area?
Yes, counting, yep, counting the total area.
Yeah, it looked like they were well within that.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicants while they're here?
No, I don't.
Any butters here? I mean, your plans look good, so it's pretty, and it's, you know, in terms of just, a lot of requests we get are to build a big addition, and then it's a struggle, so.
Did they go over the application and everything with, for the, you know, with the notarized part of, you need a notarized letter with the application and things like that when you submit it. You'd be looking at 9.3.12.4. I mean, that's not, you just need to get a notarized statement that, the letter of application, that the owner's stating that you will occupy one of the units.
Okay.
So it's an accessory, that's, that's part of the application procedure when you get it all in.
On page 110 in the bylaws.
Yeah, you'll probably look, because there's a declaration of covenant that has to be registered. There's a few things that you have to do.
And we can, we can do that as part of the recording.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, we can put that together and include that when the, if the board decides that they're gonna grant the application, we can do that as part of the recording.
I just want to make them aware of this part, to get everything filed.
Yep.
Okay, so I mean, I think, you know, we're well within the 700 feet, square feet.
Yes, we are.
And.
Before we, okay.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to grant.
I'll second.
Up to the 700 square feet?
Yep.
Do you want to, are we gonna reference the plans?
Reference these plans that we submitted?
Okay, dated 4, dated 4/7/14.
Right there.
So we got a motion, or a second?
Yeah, a second.
Getting old. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, you know, good luck.
Very good, thank you much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Motion to close this hearing?
Motion to close this hearing?
I'll make a motion to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And if you have any questions, Nick could, would be a valuable resource.
Yeah. See, this part is new for us, too.
Yeah.
But we never had, you know, an accessory apartment or an in-law, so I know I always forget that page, because those things have to go in.
No, and I understand that. I didn't realize that that was part of the application. We made it part of the recording process.
Yep.
Just haven't included it in the application.
It's okay.
Next hearing's at 7:30, so he's gotta wait a few minutes. Are you Mr. Paul? Are you Mr. Paul? Oh, Mr. Paul, okay. Finally a name I can say, okay.
Um, I'm gonna take a motion, go into recess again?
Make a motion to recess.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we have now a 7:30 applicant, Joseph Paul, requesting a special permit on the section 3.9.1.0, home occupation, and 8.2.2, changing a non-conforming use of the Auburn zoning bylaws to operate a cleaning company at 41 Elm Street. Good evening. Could you come up to the microphone and?
Motion open.
I'm sorry, motion?
I'll make a motion open hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Maybe just tell us who you are, and then maybe what your plans are.
My name's Joe Paul, and I have an accepted offer at 41 Elm Street in Auburn.
Okay.
Due to close on May 30, and I own a cleaning and restoration company. We primarily do small residential insurance claims for homeowners who have water damage. It's just me and my brother. I own the business, and he's the general manager. He's the only full-time employee. He'll also be moving into the house with me, and I'm looking to store my two commercial vehicles, one is a van and one is a pickup truck, in the barn slash garage area behind the house, and also store some of my cleaning and drying equipment in the barn as well.
Okay, and I know you gave us some pictures of the drying equipment, which I'm sure we've all seen in office buildings.
Mm-hmm.
And I think, could you maybe give us a little more detail on the cleaning supplies?
Yep.
What type of cleaning supplies, and then what type of quantities, and then where?
Okay.
When you said the barn.
Yeah, typically, we're only using household chemicals, cleaning supplies that you would see under your kitchen sink. We do store between, anywhere between one and four gallons of more industrial strength cleaning supplies onsite as well. We don't do, we don't conduct any business at the house. It would primarily be just loading and unloading of vehicles. All of the cleaning takes place at the homeowner's house, and, you know, just very typical things you'd see, like vacuums, brooms, household cleaning chemicals.
And so why don't you open up, Bob, you have some questions there?
No, actually, I don't, as a matter of fact.
Are you, I do have a question. Are you required to hold a special license or permit for any of the chemicals you use?
No.
Aren't they more or less biodegradable, biodegradable type chemicals?
Yes, yep.
Just a question on the non-conforming. Just because we're doing, he wants to keep the single family dwelling, you're gonna use this, you're gonna live in the house and run the business also, correct?
Correct.
Correct, and the reason, when I made the determination for the non-conforming use is because we're in the GI district, which is, a residential house is a non-conforming use, so that's.
That's the other part would be.
Yeah.
Do you have a list of chemicals that you keep, or quantities?
I do, yes. I don't have it here, but I could certainly provide a list, yeah.
So in terms of one, one up to four gallons of the industrial cleaners, do you know roughly how much, just in total, all the cleaning chemicals you'll have, in terms of the amounts?
That's pretty much it. We will use from job to job. If we need additional supplies, we kind of pick them up as we go.
Yeah.
We're not getting, you know, orders of 20-gallon drums of cleaning chemicals or anything.
You do not accept any deliveries of chemicals there?
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that.
And again, you have no, you are not required to have any special permit or license for any of these chemicals that might be, that would have been considered hazardous?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And we're not doing any in-depth cleaning as far as, you know, if we find, if we go to a job, the insurance company sends us out, and we find lead or asbestos, we're not doing a lead abatement, we're not doing the asbestos abatement. We contact the insurance company, they bring in someone else to do that, so.
How about stuff like dirty rags, you know, anything like that? Is that brought back to the shop for cleaning, or?
Yep. Yeah, we would, if it's something that's touched mold, or something that's touched a contaminated substance, we would double-bag it for the EPA requirements and dispose of it. But we would, if there's something we're gonna reuse that we just used in standard cleaning, we would bring it back and just clean it in the washing machine. Pretty typical.
How about, how about, like, will it be necessary for there to be a dumpster onsite? When you say dispose of it, where does that get disposed of? Does that?
We use, we typically, if there's enough debris onsite at a job, we'll get an onsite dumpster at the homeowner's house.
Okay.
We wouldn't have an onsite dumpster permanently at the house. It's not something, we're gonna have a dump truck in and out twice a month or anything. We would take it to the dump and dispose of it. We have a, we have a, an account with New England Recycling in Taunton. I'm moving from North Attleboro, so I had, I primarily conducted a lot of my business out there, so that's where we, I had an account there, so I would look to set up an account in the Auburn area with a commercial disposal company where I could bring truckloads of debris or whatever else we have. Nothing onsite at the house.
And no customers coming to the house, signing contracts, anything like that?
No.
Make payments, all that's through insurance company or off-site?
Correct, yep.
The only thing I would have would be the quantities that you're gonna keep, because frankly, all cleaning, almost all cleaning materials fit the hazardous.
Yep.
I mean, you're not gonna drink anything that you're cleaning with.
Yeah, absolutely.
So whether it's licensed or not, it's hazardous.
Yep.
So my only question is, is it, how much are you keeping there?
Yeah, it would, again, it would be only between one and four gallons. It's concentrated, so it's, we don't need an abundance of it in order to conduct our day-to-day business, so it would be, you know, no more than four gallons of a concentrated cleaning chemical onsite.
How many different cleaning, how many different chemicals do you keep there, say of one to four gallons?
That's total gallons.
That's total of everything.
Yeah, exactly. I'm not gonna have 20 different types of chemicals. Yeah, so we'll have one of an antimicrobial, we'll have one of a smoke deodorant, we'll have one of a, you know.
So basically, household sizes of everything?
Exactly, yeah, yep, yep.
I guess on a positive side, this is sort of like industrial type area, so it's not.
I think this structure was actually there before the industrial era was built around it.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was an old one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've been looking to buy a house in the Auburn area for about six months, and this is kind of exactly what I was looking for. I don't want it to be, I don't, I want it to be a residential property first, where it doesn't have the appearance, the appearance of some industrial property, but I want it to be zoned properly enough that I'm not gonna run into any issues. And when this house came on the market, I kind of jumped at the opportunity, because I think it'll be, I think it'll be a good fit in that neighborhood.
And then when you expand, you can move somewhere else in Auburn.
Yeah, well, I have, I have, right now, only about 700 square feet of storage space.
Yeah.
And nowhere to store my vehicles inside, so between the garage and the barn, I'll have about 1,500 square feet of storage space and room for four vehicles. So even if my business literally doubled, I wouldn't be expanding out of the space that I'm currently trying to use, so.
Anyone have any other questions, the applicant? Any butters here? Oh, yes, if you could come up, give us your name, address, and.
My name is Timothy Onderdunk, 3 Brook Street, Auburn, next door. My concern is the existing garage barns. There's no doors on one or both, I don't remember. I'm just wondering if there's plans to put doors on the two structures behind the house.
Have the applicant?
I mean, garage doors where the. Yeah, because they're, it's open right now, you can see right in, so. Well, right, yeah, right now, there are four garage bays, three of which have doors on them, so we would look to put, keep the vehicles in the ones that have doors on them now, and then I have plans to put a door on the other one, so I can store supplies in there as well.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I mean, I guess, take a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second. I mean, I'll make a motion to close, sorry.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion on the special permit, 3.9.1.0 and 8.2.2?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the board's approval, I guess, with the restriction of how much liquid concentrate can be onsite at any time, if something we can agree upon.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
I'd also like to add the restriction and the condition that that garage door that your butter spoke of, that that garage door is indeed installed.
Yes, yep.
And the two commercial vehicles also?
Oh, number of vehicle?
I'm sorry?
And the number of vehicles, he requests two onsite, that.
But you have garages for how many vehicles?
Four.
Right. So that, I mean, if he decided to have four vehicles in four garages, he would be perfect.
As long as they're in the garage, I mean, because it's a home occupation, so if he can keep them in the garage, that's.
Yeah, he could have four vehicles if he wanted, you know, as long as he's got four garages, but they, he's only asking for two commercial vehicles.
Now, Bob, on Bob's question on number of gallons, you probably don't want to limit it to just four, I mean.
Right. I was thinking, if he says he generally keeps four on hand, I think it'd be reasonable to say that a maximum amount of 10 gallons, because if he has four different types of chemicals, that's all he'd.
Yeah, that's the thing I.
Only two or three gallons of each chemical allowed to be on hand at a time.
Yeah, to put it in some context, for, I bought, I stocked up on.
I'll take a motion in an open, public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
Make a motion over public hearing.
Second.
Yeah, just to clarify, so the four gallons of chemicals I have now, I bought about a year ago and haven't gone through them. So it's not the kind of thing that I'm using 10 gallons a week or anything, so if it's, if you say 10 gallons can be stored onsite, that's perfectly reasonable, and we can work within that, no problem.
My only comment on that is that, you know, they're in household quantities, in other words, not, you know, five-gallon buckets, because those aren't, you know, the one-gallon sizes, I'm, that's what you usually use, correct?
Yep, yes.
Why would that make a difference?
Spillage.
For a rupture?
You'd need containment. If you have five-gallon spill or one-gallon spill, you need, then you need containment. It's in an aquifer.
So you'd like it up to X gallons per container, and then total?
Yeah, typical household, you know, most household containers you find are a gallon or less, you know, those are your household cleaners.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
The barn in which you will be storing these, whatever the chemicals are.
Yep.
Is it a dirt floor or cement floor?
It's a wood floor.
It's a wood floor.
It's cement on the first half where the garage is, and then in the back end of it, it's wood, and there's a second story that has a wood floor as well.
Okay, so that, so that part of the floor, where you would be storing these chemicals, is wood with dirt below?
I could, it doesn't really matter, so as far as, you know, whatever works for the board could work for me. I haven't pinpointed a location within the barn yet.
Is that what the current situation is?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, Timbs.
Would it?
No, I'm sorry, it's wood with a, with a open-air basement below it, like a crawl space below it, and then dirt below that, so.
If it might probably ease the board, probably, we've had this similar.
Okay.
You can buy these little containment, little tugs.
Tugs.
Okay, and there's, there's a little rubber lip, it'll hold a few gallons of. And there's, there's a little rubber lip, it'll hold a few gallons of spill, since it is, as you brought up, a great point, that it's, it's porous there, whatever's going to go in there, and it's still a zone to aquifer. If, and they're not expensive, I think, being put in to just a containment area.
Agree.
Yep.
That's reasonable.
And add that to a condition for the permit.
So I think it should state, no more than 10 gallons, all within one gallon containers or the equivalent, based at their size, and they should be stored in a spill containment tote area.
So one gallon containers up to a total of 10 gallons?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, spill containment. Okay, so three conditions, install garage doors, up to one gallon containers, a total of 10 gallons of the cleaning, and then the spill containment. Okay, so take a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to see that garage door, for the benefit of your neighbors-
Sure.
-be the first item before you bring anything in.
I have a list, a punch list, and the first thing on the list is actually to put in garage doors.
Fantastic.
I just want to secure the building.
Very good.
Yeah.
I have another question for you, being that you just said that.
Yeah.
Are there any other entrances into that building? Other than the garage door that you're going to install?
Yes, there's a, there's a door in the rear, a side door, that's-
And will that be secured also?
Yes. Yep.
Great. So now a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we have-
The original motion still stands open.
So the motion stands open, we have three conditions, I think everyone agrees to, so-
Second that motion.
Second motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Well, we have time, ladies.
Oh, yeah, we have money here.
Well, I have to recuse myself on this one. All right, bud. I represent.
You are?
Well, yeah. Trustee for the, go ahead.
Are you the oldest?
Yeah. I'll show you.
So Dennis is going to remove himself. So we have a 745 applicant, Thomas Severt, and Gerald Gray requesting a variance on the section 3.2.6.5, commercial recreation, to operate a recreation facility at 440 Washington Street, they'll take a motion to open a public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
And I'm going to recuse myself from this, so-
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, are you Mr., Mr. Gray? Before we start, I just wanted to let you know that one of our members is absent tonight, Mr. Cussy, so in order to pass a variance, you would need all four votes, affirmative votes, so I just want to let you know, because if you've got five members-
All right, yeah, I know, it's one of those conflicts.
You've got a better chance, in case one member votes no. And then the second thing, you've put together a nice package, but the thing I noticed was, some of your information about the criteria for a variance seemed to be more, it was more based on how your business would not be a, would be a benefit to the town and the location, not so much how the property would be eligible for a variance. So I didn't know, did you talk to anyone?
Excuse me, could you step up to the microphone?
Actually, come up to the mic.
It's difficult for me to respond to that, because I'm not the property owner, but he happens to be here tonight.
Okay.
So, not being able to really speak to that, that question, I answered it from my point of view, and what I, what I saw was the impact on, on the business, and it was the only perspective I could give you.
Okay. Because what kind of, in case, so you know, kind of know the process we're going through, the, the use that you're-
Could you speak up?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
I-
The, the use that you're requesting, is that it's not allowed in that zoning district?
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Oh, I don't know if it's this microphone? The, can you hear me now?
That's better.
The use that you're requesting is not allowed by the current zoning bylaws, so our, our task is to hear your request and then determine if there is something about that property that, under the criteria of, is there anything relating to the soil conditions, the shape, or the topography of the lot, that would mean that the property can't be used for the operations that are allowed in that zoning district?
Not that I know of, you know. You're asking me, is there any restrictions that the size of the property or the facility would have?
No, see, see, right now, the zoning bylaws don't allow a recreation use in that district. If it was in the highway business district, it would be allowed, so in order for us to grant a variance, we need to kind of discuss with you, and then, Mr. Wade, what is, does it meet the eligibility criteria for variance? And that's what we're really focused on tonight. So, Mr. Wade, do you want to maybe help out your applicant as well? Maybe just give us your name and address for the-
My name is Michael Wade, okay? I'm the owner of the property at 440 Washington Street. Do you want my street address where I live?
That's okay.
Okay, that's, that's enough. Going through, in fact, I think the last time I was here at the zoning board meeting, I think you probably have it on record, that it was stated that they would rather have a highway business in my property than to have it, a GI where I could have a manufacturing facility, which would have more hazardous waste into the water. So in other words, I'm going by realistically what the zoning board said, and at that time, that was the chairman of the zoning board, and that's what we, I've gone with, also gone with, most of the properties in that area now have gone the highway, you know, business, everything, across the street, my building here, up the street, there was a recreational facility in the GI right down the street, I think St. Mark Street, which was the big tent that was there. So in other words, all that stuff has been put into the area.
Right. No, and I hear what you're saying, but I think it's sort of been the, the practice of the board to take each case based on the facts.
Yes, yes.
Because I don't know the recreational facility that you mentioned, I don't know what the history is with that, but when we look at the zoning bylaws, if the use is not allowed-
I'm familiar with the zoning bylaws. I'm very familiar with what I have as a building, what I've seen in the area that has gone up.
Right.
The reasons why, is, it's the same thing, in other words, it's better in a cleaner business, if it's in a highway business, than I can have light manufacturing in that area. Would the town like to see light manufacturing there? Because they always get upset about the groundwater, they worry a lot about the groundwater.
I agree.
So in other words, looking to protect the groundwater, which, you know, I have a ton of recharge pits in there to do that, all right? And that's why leaning more towards highway businesses than industrial businesses. And that's, like I said, has been brought up on the board many a times when I was here, and I'm surprised the town has never rezoned that area for highway business, if that's what they prefer in that area.
Right. And that is something that if you went to the, I don't know if it'd be through the town planner, but to get something-
I mean, they've been going on over this for, since I, I've been there, and that's almost 20 years, they've been going, talking about, well, maybe we should rezone it.
But I do remember, because I was on the board last time you came, when you came in for the impervious service for that new building, and I believe at that time, you mentioned it was going to be for overflow, storage-
Right, in other words, but I also said is, I didn't know who the tenants were going to be, because I was building that building on spec.
Right.
I was gambling what it was, but then I was told it was better that the board would favor more highway business than, say, what is allowed in a GI district. And that's what I've been leaning towards, I've been leaning towards, you know, highway businesses, because it's a cleaner business, there's a lot less waste in retail versus, you know, manufacturing.
No, and you know what, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I think as the board, even to try to grant a variance for use, that if it doesn't meet the criteria, we, really, according to mass general law, we really can't, if we approve it and it doesn't meet the criteria, if anyone petition challenges it, it gets thrown right out, because, and, and you know, from past, like, submissions you put in, we really have to go by the bylaws, you know, we're not setting the bylaws, the town meeting members set this bylaw on use, and then they decided that, you know, the zoning board then would enforce it, with the option, if there's something about that land that would warrant a variance, then we can grant the variance based on that, but I, I do think the building could still be used for an eligible-
I hate to tell you how I'm sitting here tonight, and I'm listening to a lot of variances granted, and all of a sudden, it seems like I come up-
Those are all special permits.
And it's, it's not there. And I wish you guys would determine, do you want industrial, because I can advertise for industrial in there, or do you want highway businesses? I think the zoning board better get on the same page.
Right.
In other words, all I hear, every time I come before this zoning board, is all kinds of different things going on. I don't know what it is, all right? Everything. So I go by what I was told, I can pull the file out very easy and show that I was told they prefer highway businesses. And I think Mr. Nattoli owned the amusement down below in the big tent. I think that was his, you know, project. So in other words, it was allowed in the zoning. In other words, because I want to do it, it's not allowed in the zoning district?
No, no, I think as a board, we're, we're going to be consistent in terms of-
I think the board should be consistent.
Right.
Okay? Board should be consistent.
May I? Oh, yes, yeah.
May I too?
Mr. Wade, I think what might be misunderstood here is that you're requesting a variance, and a variance is very specific criteria that's met for reasons. And again, Mr. Coleman read those. You might be better suited to withdraw your application and reapply under a special permit. Would you agree, other board members? Would that be a better suited method?
By, by saying that, though, if I may, the avenue of our zoning bylaws doesn't allow for the application of a special permit.
I just wanted to show that things were clear.
That's why, yeah, that's, that's why the, the use variance, that's why when I made my determination, it was determined that a use variance was required versus a special permit, because our bylaws don't, don't allow for the special permit to be used in this criteria.
And I think we all agree that the use you're recommending, we'd, it's a nice, low-impact operation, but until, unless we can get an overlay district or some change to the zoning in that area-
I have one quick question, what's an overlay district?
Almost like, like the aquifer overlay, if there was some way they could do like a, some type of zoning change amendment to, that you could put certain types of highway business in that area, but-
Well, I mean, that could take forever.
And that I don't know, I don't know how long-
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, that's almost ridiculous. The other question is, then, how did everybody get in there that's doing highway businesses in that area?
Well, in the past, we, we didn't have someone like Nick that really keeps on top of, not, not-
No, I think most of the time, if you had to put a highway business in there, you had to go between this board. There's no way in a GI you could do that without sitting down and going to this board, because I've been to this board many a times.
Well, I've been on a board, I mean, not a long time, six years, and I don't recall any, that discussion about highway business in the GI district, I don't, I just don't-
All right, then I'll have to pull it, and Larry Broder was sitting with me the last time, and I asked him, I said, "You hear that?" And that was by Mr. Nattoli. He was sitting right in here. So I heard it, it's probably on tape.
I'm not disagreeing that-
Well, that's what I'm saying, you said you didn't hear it, I'm just stating, you know-
I don't recall.
What it was. Yes.
But even, but really, if you think about the zoning board, you, you can't go by other ca, you have to look at every case-
Right.
-on its own merits.
Yep.
Look at the bylaws, and there are a lot of cases that we want to approve, and I know we've struggled with it as a board, this would be great for that location, but we can't approve it, because that's not what the bylaws, we, we went to a seminar recently, it was a retired assistant district attorney, and he made a comment that really struck home with me. He said, "A town meeting member set the zoning bylaws, and then all of a sudden, you're going to have five people on a zoning board, they're going to go, 'Well, we're going to, we're not going to go by that, we're going to decide what we're going to do.'" And is that right, for five members to make a decision that the town doesn't want? And that's what drives our decisions up here. But Megan, did you have a question for?
I mean, I just wanted to reiterate that the, the other applicants that were here tonight were here for special permits, which is a totally different criteria from what you're asking, and in order for us as the zoning board to allow a variance, there are four conditions that need to be met, and frankly, you can't meet any of them. So, you know, and I agree, and I think we all agree, this use would be better, would it be better than industrial? Absolutely. But we don't have the right or the power to say, "Well, because we think the use is better." Sure. That, that's, that's literally not within our power, we can't do that.
Because if we do that, then every other applicant that comes in-
Then, could I ask you one question? How did I put my business where it is? I had to get a special permit and a variance, and went before the zoning board to get it. So how did I get that? And how did all the businesses across the street from me get in there? That's what I don't understand. I mean, I can't comprehend, and that's what I'm trying to comprehend. How did they get in, and all of a sudden, you can't do what it is? That's, all I want is a straight answer, how they got in and how I actually got in.
And I know we have an abutter here, and I know he's, you know, he's got a lot of experience from the prior years on the board, so I don't, Dennis, would you like to come up to the microphone?
When the, across the street, when it was granted, it was the first one's granted. The bylaw, the overlay was brand-new. There was a legal use in the industrial zone in that building, and the town evicted that, that use. It was legal for the industrial zone because of the overlay. So with that, because of the problem with the overlay, it was brand-new, they granted, and it was, couldn't use it legally, unlike, I think, this situation where, you know, there can be legal uses of that one, it was a legal use, we were, a company was evicted from the building. So rather than taking it by eminent domain, they allowed a use, and it was due to the aquifer. So it's not the same situation, every situation is different, every piece of land is different. At that time, it was unique, because it was the first one, now we're seeing the aquifer goes around, so it is no, you, you, that unique, because I agree, as a, a property owner on there, that it should be rezoned, you know, I think we can get that done within, within a year, we've, we've done it before, we can get that done, it just has to go before a town meeting. I think we can get it done, and you're absolutely right, highway overlay would be great there.
A point of order.
And I think we can get it done.
Mr. Nattoli is speaking as a member of the board right now.
No, I'm not speaking as a member of the board, I'm speaking as an abutter, and I, I-
You stated that we could go before the board, and we've done that before, and we could get it done.
The town has.
That's speaking not as an abutter.
No, no, the lawyer didn't do nothing-
I bring the point of order to protect us, that's all.
Okay, no, no, if you'll let me finish. The applicant was here for, on Southbridge Street, and he brought through a, the same scenario, he needed a, basically a change to go in there. And what I was saying, because there's, to Mr. Wade here, is that it can be done, the town has done it within a reasonable period of time. It was actually done within one year of the, it's actually done at the next meeting, basically.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Wade or Mr. Gray? Do you guys have any other comments you want to make?
Not really, I just don't understand it, but that's fine, this is usually what I
What I was saying, because there's, to Mr. Wade here, is that it can be done, the town has done it within a reasonable period of time. It was actually done within one year of the, it's actually done on the next meeting, basically.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Wade or Mr. Gray? Do you guys have any other comments you want to make?
Not really, I just don't understand it, but that's fine, this is usually what I get with the zoning board anyways.
Well, I mean...
You know, that's what I'm saying, I will go, talk to my lawyer, and find out what's going on, and then go from there, and make a decision. And also do what Mr. Nataoli suggested, maybe it's about time they did change it, okay? Then we don't have to keep coming again to the board.
Right.
That's, that's what I'm saying. Because if you guys want something in there, but all of a sudden, boom. Man, I'd love to have a guy come in with manufacturing tomorrow and say, "I need that building," I'd say, "You've got it," you know? And then what does the town do? All of a sudden, they're worried about hazardous stuff. So, I can legally rent it to them, but I can't rent it to somebody that's going to have a lot less impact on the soil, and basically on the conditions, and that really doesn't make sense to me. And I was talking about Mr. Nataoli's building, but also have a building at 421 Washington Street that has retail in it also. And that had to go before the board to get it in there, even though I was in there first. So that, that's what I'm saying, how does, how does all this stuff happen?
You know, and I can't speak to the prior board's...
No, no, alright, well, I think you were sitting on the board quite a few times when I was here, okay? I do remember your face, the other two gentlemen, I, I don't, but I know Mr. Nataoli, because we are abutters. And that, that's what I'm saying. But I've seen you a number of times at these zoning meetings.
But I do, I do think, like Mr. Nataoli mentioned, the board supports the concept of reworking the zoning bylaws.
Oh, no, I'm going to, that's what I said, I'm going to contact my lawyer...
Right.
And find out what's the best way to proceed.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what I said. I will contact him and find out what's the best way to proceed.
No, that's good, I mean, because even the board, we used to struggle with sign variances all the time, and then it became an issue. So, the town planner, working with the different boards...
Right.
Changed it, a new bylaw, now there's special permits, it's easier for the zoning board, I mean, we all prefer a special permit.
Could I ask one question? If you people are the zoning board, then do you change the zoning classification, or is that done by a different department?
I think Nick could probably answer that, right?
I, I believe that the way Mass General Law works is that, in order for a zoning amendment to be made, is that it needs to be made by the planning board.
Okay, so basically, I would have to talk to the planning board?
Yes.
Great, thanks, Nick.
And then the planning board, if I understand it, then they recommend to have it changed? Is that how it works?
The planning board has to, has to make a recommendation for, for a zoning bylaw change. Once that is accepted, then it has to go to town meeting, and it has to be voted in a town meeting, then it has to be approved by the attorney general. Once all of those steps have been completed, and nobody has appealed or, or contested the, the application, at that point, it becomes an inactive zoning bylaw.
Right. And it'd be a public hearing to discuss it.
Right, yeah, basically what you have right here.
But we would support, I think the zoning board, and the planning board that came before the zoning board, to get our advice on the signed bylaw, we said it looks great. The accessory bylaw, looks great, we support it, and that helps sell it to the town meeting.
Right.
And we'd feel the same way about some type of overlay district on Route 20, the same thing. I'd rather have a recreational facility than like a manufacturer with a lot of cutting oil.
That's what I'm saying, which doesn't make sense.
Right.
Everybody's worried about, and that's why I don't understand what a town didn't make the change a long time ago.
Right.
I've owned property in that area since 1994, and everybody's talked about it, and nothing's been done.
But that's when a businessman like yourself can help drive that, by going to the town? You, you'll make a big push to get something like that moving?
And I think it may be an opportune time right now, with all the construction on Route 20, the resurfacing of the road...
Right.
The rebuilding down the other end towards the Oxford line, this may be your opportune time to get it done.
Right.
Right. And in other words, Route 20 seems to be in a main thoroughfare. Route 12 used to be, but now it's Route 20.
Yes.
Alright, and like I says, I, I guess, I can't understand how, when you have a low-impact business...
Right.
How the town is up in arms over, that's what, I guess I don't comprehend, but I do understand the stuff you're talking about.
Right.
I do understand it, but I guess, when you say it hasn't happened, well, I own a property across the street that it does, I own 444, which is right next door to 440, and I'm doing retail in there.
Right. And, and that's, again, that's when we keep each one separate, because if we were spiteful, we'd say, "Mr. Wade has that retail operation, I don't think that should be in business." But we don't, you know, we look at each case individually.
No, no, that, that I understand, but you also have to bring into account what is there, too. What is in the, well, when you're doing it, you also bring up what is in the general area, what business is in the general area? I think that's part of it when you're answering those questions, in other words, you're looking at what businesses are there. In, in other words, is the business putting in there going to stand out like a sore thumb?
Right.
Or is it going to blend in with everything that's there?
I agree, I think, you know, like, and Nick gave you some good information, maybe even start with the planning board, talk to Adam, he's a bright guy in terms of what is the best way to get something moving. You know, we, I think we all support that as well. So I guess your options are, we could vote on it, or if you want to withdraw without prejudice?
Well, I, I think I'll withdraw without prejudice right now, and I will talk to my lawyer, and then find out what to, how, what's the best way to proceed, okay? Because I, I understand, and also going with four people there, because if one person decides, "Hey, I don't want to do it," it's gone anyway. So that, that I do understand.
Okay.
And I knew Mr. Nataoli had to dismiss himself because he's an abutter. Yeah, so that I do understand.
If I may through the chair, there, there is a third option, the third option is, is that Mr. Wade can ask for the hearing to be continued until the fifth member of the, or the sixth member of the zoning board is available to, to be included into the conversation.
No, that's true. You know, but I, I guess based on what you kind of heard us say...
Right.
Sort of your opinion in terms of, do you want to continue it, or do you want to...
No, 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 that's, I think, well, I could continue it, okay? In other words, I just have to get, well, now I understand where you people stand...
Right.
So now I have to get different things, which, I mean, I have to contact my lawyer, and find out what's the best way to proceed on this, that's what I'm saying. So I guess we'd have to continue it, and it doesn't do any good to have only four people, because like I says, if one person decides, "Hey, I don't like this guy, I'm not going to vote for it," all of a sudden, it's not going to pass. So that, that's what I'm saying, so almost the deck is stacked against us right at the moment.
Okay, so you're leaning toward continuing?
Yes.
Okay. I'll take a motion to continue Mr. Gray and Mr. Wade's case until the next meet, do you want to do it the next meeting, June 19th, or?
June 19th.
June, or the July?
I will, yeah, June 19th will be fine, I'm going to call and get information on what, what's the best way to proceed, and I'll know that within a couple of days.
Nick, do you know, I think you mentioned there are already a couple of cases, should we make it at 7:45, or 7...
I, I don't know exactly what the, what the agenda is, I believe we can make this one the first one, because we, we don't have, we haven't actually done the advertisements yet, so we don't know.
Okay.
We haven't confirmed.
So when is the next meeting?
June 19th.
June 19th.
Like I made a motion, oh, God.
Can, can you give me a sense of where this is going, because I have to make some decisions. I have money committed...
Yeah.
And I found the ideal space for my business, and if this is going to be a long, contracted process, I have got to find another location.
We really can't, because it's really, each vote member of board has to make their call in terms of what they're thinking. So a lot of it, you have to sort of, like, when you heard us discussing about the criteria you'd have to meet...
And, and the problem I have is I can't impact that one way or another, I, I, I kind of don't have a dog in the fight, I'm just standing here watching, you know?
And it's not a reflection on you, it's nothing...
And I'm telling you, I, I've got a dynamite business for this town, alright? I'm telling you. And if I had a chance to present it to you, you'd be on board.
No, I, I believe, I read through it, and...
But I got more stuff here, too.
As a, as a sense of a procedural matter...
Yeah.
Even if Mr. Wade grants the continuance or asks for the continuance, and the board grants that, that doesn't prevent you from saying, "I don't want to meet this timeframe." So, so we can, the board can grant the continuance till June 19th, if you find that that doesn't meet your timeframes as necessary, you have the ability to withdraw the, the application if, if you decide that you need to move forward without this. So, a, a, at this point, continuing the hearing to, to get a better sense and speaking with your attorney may be the better option, and then, because you always have the ability to withdraw without prejudice prior to, prior to the next meeting, if, if you find that the timeframes aren't working for you.
It wasn't, it wasn't a trivial process finding this property, we looked at a lot of property in Auburn. I, I don't think we had many options in Auburn, because we looked mostly available property, and either the size of it, or, there's always, there was always something that was a negative, that really impacted our ability to set up a business at that location. I think we ran it to look elsewhere. Unless, unless property has opened up since we ended our, our surge, that's probably the direction we're going in. But Auburn is an ideal location, this is an ideal location, the intersection of a lot of these roads, and I'm really disappointed.
And we appreciate your honesty about that. Okay, so...
Let's make a motion to grant, close the public hearing first?
Okay.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to allow the continuance until the June 19th meeting?
Okay, 7:00, 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, excuse me, yeah.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we continued it to June 19th, but if you decide that you don't want to come back, whatever, you can, either Mr. Wade or yourself can let the town know, and it's okay. If you, you could even say you want to continue it to July or August, but, you know, just let the town know if you can't, if you decide you don't want to meet in June?
As, from my point of view, I, I want to do the June 19th.
Okay, so we did, we set up for...
So right, so you could set that up?
Yeah, at 7:00 PM.
You know, I don't have anything to change that, so I want to pursue that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to, want a motion to adjourn it?
No, no, what a voter? You can't close a meeting and then continue it.
Oh, that's right, could we, uh...
Close the public comments.
No, no, you close the meeting, you have to, the meeting stays open, you have to just continue it.
So I'll take a motion to reopen?
You guys voted to close it, so you have to...
Reopen it at the next one?
Reopen it.
Okay.
So I'll take a motion to reopen the public...
Motion to reopen.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think we're all, is that pretty much it, anything else?
Now we need a motion to continue. We need a motion, a motion to continue this until the June 19th meeting, 7:00 PM.
Oh, I'll make a motion to continue.
That's what I just did.
Second, I'll second the motion.
On favor?
Aye. Motion to, now we have a motion...
Before we adjourn, I just want to make sure that, you know, just in case, anytime you close a hearing, you can't take anything, and no decisions are made.
Right, right.
So anything that you want to keep open, you know, maybe you want to think of, even when we, like, when we ask applicants questions...
Yeah, right, right.
Can't do that after you close. So you can, you can keep a meeting open while you vote.
Okay.
Which is sometimes the better thing to do, so you don't have to keep opening meetings.
Right. Okay, perfect.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second?
On favor?
Aye.